All right, so if I can call to order the monthly meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education for Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to have you all stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I'm not aware of any public participation, so we will move down to communications. And Mark, I would... I'm sorry, roll call.
Scott?
I'm here.
Ben?
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll move down to communications. Mark?
Yeah, so I do have our four-county report here from Cinder Keeler. They just started the school year, as we did here at Bryan City Schools. So she said they're off to a great start at four county, and they enjoyed their weeks of welcome, as they call it, which they have daily events for ten straight days with something fun to get the school year started. She said their enrollment at four-county Career Center right now is nine hundred and twenty-seven students, and all students are able to take free of, or take advantage of free breakfast and lunches daily. She'll have more updates as the school year continues. And that's the four-county report from Cinder.
That's great. I appreciate Cinder doing that for us.
Scott, did we have last month's board minutes?
Yes, we do need to have that, and so we'll look at the... And did you get a chance to look at those? My computer is totally gone, so... If you've had a minute to look at the last month's board meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections, any additions? So I guess I would just accept the motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve last month's meeting.
Okay, thanks, Dustin.
Second?
Thanks, Mike. Yep, thanks for that catch there, Deb.
Scott?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, we'd like to move on to our favorite part of the monthly board meetings, our student spotlight. So if we could...
Yeah, so we have the Moores with us tonight. So Dawson Moore, the student of ours. And Dawson, why don't you come on up with your family, or your dad? And Dawson is a student at our high school, and he's done some amazing things in the recent months to help fundraise for the Special Olympics. And he's going to tell us, him and his dad Caleb, this is Caleb with him, are going to tell us their story about their neat adventures that they've had in the last four to five months in regards to the Special Olympics. So I'm going to turn it over their way. The microphones might need turned on. If you want to check, and you can speak right directly into those, okay?
So like you said, my name is Caleb Moore. So we moved specifically to Bryan about two and a half years ago, just specifically for Dawson to be able to participate in your guys' special needs classes. So although Dawson doesn't fit all of the regular requirements or typical things that happen with kids with special needs, Dawson has like five or six different diagnoses, including he is on the autism spectrum, he has central auditory processing disorder, he has a little bit of an anxiety disorder, and multiple other things that kind of make it, so it makes it a little bit harder for him to learn and understand kind of what's going on. So we have went through IEPs and all kinds of things with Mrs. Taylor. He now is, he'll tell you who his teacher is here in a little bit. And we're very, been very successful here at Bryan, especially with this new young teacher that you guys have that is absolutely phenomenal. So one of the, after one of the IEPs, Dawson is a huge sports lover. And so after one of the IEPs, Mrs. Taylor and Dr. Alpartt, that was here previously, kind of cornered me and bullied me into allowing for him to join sports, which was against everything that wants me to be able to protect him, and allow for him to be part of a team, which is all Dawson has ever wanted to do, was kind of be part of a team, part of a group of people, his own peers and things like that. So Dawson has been able to join a few sports. We were able to, in that kind of being, we were able to join and be in the Special Olympics Field Day last year. That happened at the end of the year. It was outside. It was much smaller than it normally is, is what I'm told. But it was very cool to hear all of his classmates and his peers kind of cheering him on and all kinds of stuff. So we as parents always have tried to protect him from certain situations. We want to make sure that he's always in the right space at the right time. So with, after the Field Day, we kind of made the decision as a family that even though Dawson doesn't exactly fit the criteria or the look of the normal Special Olympics-type kid, that he does for sure fit the mentality, and he does qualify. And so we decided that he could start being involved in the Special Olympics. So we were, kind of started trying to figure out how that was going to look like, and that's when we found the Special Olympics torch run, the law enforcement torch run that happens every year. And so then Dawson will be able to tell you, in his own words, a little bit about what he was able to do with this torch run and things like that. So, okay? You ready? Okay, start right here.
Hi, my name is Dawson Moore.
Say it over again, so they can hear you.
Hi, my name is Dawson Moore. I am in the tenth grade in Mr. Davies' class. I participate in cross-country and track. This summer, I was able to...
Participate.
Participate in Special Olympics. Law?
Law.
Law and tor...
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
Torch run.
I ended up being the highest fundraiser for the torch run. Recent...
Raising?
Raising over one hundred and eighty dollars.
One thousand eight hundred dollars. Wow.
I also ran one mile for each person that...
Donated?
Donated to my campaign, with ending up being thirty-six miles.
You did that in the whole month of July. Wow.
I am excited that the first thing I did with Special Olympics was so much fun. I can't wait to play basketball with Special Olympics in the winter.
There you go. He also has something that he received from the state of Ohio. So Dawson was not only the highest fundraiser around here, he also was the highest fundraiser in the state of Ohio, individual fundraiser in the state of Ohio. So the state Special Olympics sent him something. He wanted to bring it to you guys to be able to show you what he got, including the Special Olympic shirt that he also received. So you want to go show it to him?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is what I got from the Silver Olympic. Is that... That's great.
That is awesome, Dawson. Very good. And highest in the state.
Highest in the state. That is cool.
Very good, very good. That's really nice. Yeah, let me see, Dawson, that's great. And you did thirty-six miles of, wow. That's incredible. Very good.
Dawson, absolutely amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I can see why your mom and dad are so very proud of you.
Very nice. Are you still in cross-country then? Do that too?
Yeah.
How's it going so far?
Good.
You enjoying it?
Yes.
Good for you. Thanks for coming.
Yep.
Good job.
Yep, thank you.
So is that it? Yeah? So what did you say to them?
Thank you for letting me come and telling me about my several good stuff.
Well, we're very happy to hear about it, Dawson, and thank you for doing all of that, to raise the money and to run the miles. It's an incredible feat, and we wish you the best of luck in the next events that you're in.
Thank you.
So, Caleb, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Moores.
Yes, I would just commend you as a family being willing to step outside that comfort zone and helping him to do the same and allow him this opportunity to grow and really experience such success. Congratulations.
Well, I will tell you that, I mean, you guys hear a lot of the negative that happens in Bryan City Schools, I know. And the people that you have in place, Julie Taylor and Tyler Davies, is the reason that this is happening. It's the reason that he can stand up here, and you know, the reason he prays at church sometimes in front of seven hundred people. It's a big deal, and so you really are, you are doing a good job. So thank you for what you do also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Caleb. Do you want to take a picture? Yeah, so can we take just a brief, couple-minute break and take a photograph with Dawson and his family? That would be great.
All right.
All right, so we move on down to our administrative reports. The first one is athletics, and I think probably you're doing that.
Yep, so we have some events going on tonight with golf. So busy, busy, busy in the world of athletics this fall. So I'm going to read Mr. Savage's updates for us. So he just wants to note some very successful teams that are in the midsummer season right now and continuing to hope for the best. So we have girls tennis right now is at sixteen and oh. And they are traveling to Norwalk this coming Wednesday for the state tournament match. That is the Tennis Coaches Association Tournament match. It's not the state tournament yet, so that's another tournament outside of the state tournament that they're going to be in. So they are ranked number one in the Northwest District in Division Two in Ohio.
Wow.
So sixteen and oh, we hope they keep it rolling.
Yeah.
So congratulations to them on their success so far. Girls soccer is also undefeated. They are eight and oh overall and two and oh in the league, and they are currently ranked twelfth in the state. So we know that they're going to keep things rolling as well. So congratulations to those girls on their success thus far. Football right now is two and two and oh and one in the league, as we just lost Archibald this past Friday. But we're looking forward to hosting Delta this coming Friday night, and that game is at home. So we're loving the weather we've been having for the football season so far.
Yeah.
Volleyball is currently four and seven and one and one in the league. They've been playing some very tough matches throughout the fall. Boys soccer is three and five overall and also one and one in the league. Golf recently took first at the Defiance Invite, second at the Pauline Invite, and third at the Patrick Henry Invite. So they're having a successful season as well. Our cheerleaders will compete at the Williams County Fairgrounds tomorrow night at the fair, so best of luck as they compete over there. And cross-country, Josh Taylor, if you haven't seen this, he's a speed demon. He broke his own school record at the Columbus Grove Invite with a time of fifteen minutes and thirty-one and a half seconds. I don't know if I could walk from here to my car in that amount of time. So good for Josh. Volleyball, Gwen Spangler, another record setter. She has gone over one thousand digs this fall, so congrats to Gwen. She is the first player in school history to achieve that accomplishment. So congrats, Gwen. And we have the NWOL golf tournament coming up Friday, September twenty-fourth, and that is in Defiance. And we also have the big week on the horizon. Homecoming week is the first week of October, so the homecoming game is October eighth, and that's against Aragreen. So Friday, October eighth is homecoming. In all, we have two hundred and seventy-two kids in fall sports this year, grade seven through twelve. So we are very pleased with those numbers to have students participating in multiple sports. And we have four students that are in dual sports this fall. Currently, they are all boys this season, which is different from some previous seasons. So we have a combination of soccer-football, a combination of football-golf, a combination of soccer-golf, and a combination of soccer and cross-country. So that's just a little overview on the world of athletics.
Good, thanks, Mark. Appreciate you giving that report. Move on down to the Bryan Elementary.
Yeah, so Mrs. Dominic is with us tonight. Welcome, Mrs. Dominic. How are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Good.
Just a couple of updates. We have some events coming up, some things that the kids have been busy with, staff has been busy with. Happy to report that the year is off to a good start. Kids are getting settled in. Teachers are getting settled into new schedules and new atmospheres. Things are going overly well. Last week in kindergarten, we celebrated Global Play Day, which if you haven't been familiar with that in the past, it's basically a day where the kids have a chance to learn, to interact, and play games with each other, both indoor and outdoor games. There's academic stuff built in, but it is mainly just playing and learning, building relationships for the day, and that was a great day last Friday. Tomorrow, we have kiddos going to the fair. We have a couple of classrooms for Disability Day heading to the Williams County Fair to enjoy that day, so we're excited about that. We'll also be doing Start With Hello Week next week. Our guidance department leads the way in that program, again, helping students to learn proper ways to greet people, to engage in conversation, which of course will lead to relationships as well in the end. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you, we have, it's not a new program, but our high school mentors that are coming over. I feel like this year we have an overabundant amount of kids who are willing to come over from the six-to- twelve building, both juniors and seniors, and working with our kids, both whole group setting in the classroom, pulling kids individually. Some of them are working with specific kiddos that are struggling with some different things, and that is off to a great start, thanks to Mrs. Arthur at the high school who leads that program and shares those kids with us during the day. But overall, good start. We're excited about what's happening and some events that are coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mrs. Dominic. Appreciate the report. I'll move on to the Bryan Middle School, High School report.
So we have one admin covering the band at the fair. We have one covering some other athletics, and we have one that is out sick. So with that, I just have a very brief update that they passed along to me, and I already noted it. They're just gearing up for the big homecoming week. That is that first week of October. They've had a very great start to the school year, and like, we just noted with the athletic updates, they're celebrating the successes happening in the buildings. They recently had Michael Dickinson, who is an artist from Delaware, I believe it was, come into the art classes and present. He does window paintings.
Right.
And if you had the opportunity to see the painting downtown on the square?
Yes.
It is beautiful. And actually, Mrs. Isaac, Renee Isaac, was able to get a photograph of that that has a reflection of the courthouse in the paint.
Oh, wow.
And it is the most beautiful setting you'll ever see. And we've said that needs to be on a postcard here in Bryan sometime very soon, because it's really neat. So just a wealth of opportunities for students that they're taking part in, and a lot of good things happening. Our Fall Play Cast is practicing and getting prepared for the upcoming show is this November, which is, it's hard to believe, it's kind of around the corner already. So just a lot happening, as always, at the middle of high school.
Oh, it's great. It's good that they're off to a good start. We move on down to the next report, which would be teaching and learning. So I think Mrs. Cox will give that report.
Good evening. Like Mrs. Dominic said, the teachers in both buildings are off to a great start, building that foundational, creating those relationships with students. Here at the elementary, teachers are digging in with their Wonders curriculum and their new science curriculum. We have also had, we're still finishing up due to quarantine, some of our diagnostic testing in both reading and math. On the October Professional Development Day, our teachers will be digging into that data in order to look at areas of strengths and areas of growth to guide instruction. On our next Professional Development Day, October fifteenth, I've been working with Mr. Keel at the high school. He has been working with Ally Molded, and we are going, there's about twelve teachers that are going to take a tour of Ally Molded. We want to have this become something that we do maybe three times a year during our in-service days for about an hour. We think this is really important, because when our teachers know what our businesses do, they can in turn help our students. So we've been looking at a few different companies, but the first one that we're going to visit in October is Ally Molded, so we're excited for that.
Great, thank you. That's exciting. Thank you. And we'll have the last report from our Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Masser.
Hello, good evening. Kind of three different areas here to report on. First of all, is testing. As the new school year rolls around, of course, we're required to test our kindergartners with the kindergarten readiness assessment, and then our preschool kids with the early learning assessment. So teachers will begin that in the coming weeks. An email is today that the teacher wants to start tomorrow, so they're trying to get that crossed off and get those kiddos tested. Just a reminder to parents, we always post menu changes on social media, and because of supplier issues that seems like everyone is having in the world, we are having to change our menu more than we would like. In a normal year, we see no changes. This year, we've had to change four or five times already. And our suppliers are telling us that is going to be the norm this year. So we try to get that message out on our social media platforms so that parents are aware and students are aware of that. Last thing to report on is a grant, the Safe Routes to School Grant, which is actually not a Bryan City Schools grant. It's Bryan City, the city of Bryan's grant. But with that, we get some money for bike safety is part of that grant. So with that, we are able to purchase and pass out the first week of October, is our goal, bike helmets to every single elementary student.
Wow.
And with that, our SROs will be doing a little bike safety demonstration for them and talking through them on how to get safely to and from school, or just if they're out leisurely riding around, having some fun on their bike, how to do so safely. So it's really great that we're able to coordinate that where we get our kids in some bike helmets as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that is the end of our communications report. We'll move on to Mr. Schaefer, Treasurer's Report.
Thank you. The regular monthly reports are in your packet as normal. I note the fund balance at the end of the month was nineteen million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. And then I have for you amended appropriations for fiscal year twenty-two. Sorry, I lost where I had that pulled up here. It's a total increase of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents amongst all funds. The general fund has increased by seventy thousand dollars, the food service fund by a hundred and five thousand dollars, and permanent improvement by a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight thirty, amongst some other increases as well. For that, and then donations, we received and recognized with appreciation the Wall of Honor from Master Chief John Healy and his wife Lori. Five hundred dollar anonymous donation for the golf team from the United Way of Williams County masks for the buses, which we've gone through, the significant amounts. We very much appreciate the donation of masks there, and an American flag from the Bryan American Legion.
All right, so having heard the Treasurer's Report, is there any questions?
Scott, can I just interrupt? Sorry.
Sure.
If you have not had the opportunity to see the Wall of Honor yet from John Healy and his wife Lori, that they have graciously donated, it is, it is just awesome. Well over four hundred names on the wall. It's right on the angled wall when you walk into the athletic lobby, and I know he is very proud of it. It has brought joy to many people's hearts to know that their loved ones' names are on that wall. And as we just recognize September eleventh and a big twenty-year anniversary of that tragic event in the United States, we also remember those who have served even more. But we also look forward to remembering those who have served at the Veterans Day Assembly that we typically have every year in November. And we're going to officially commemorate that board at that time and do an official recognition of that board. So it is, it's really neat to see it, and I just want to again thank, thank them for their support to bring the joy to many people's hearts in the community with that wall.
Yeah, and I thank you for those comments, Mark. John and Lori have done a great job, and I, in fact, I did. I went down and took pictures of it. It is very impressive, so we do thank them for that. So if there's any questions on the Treasurer's Report or recommendations, anything to add? So if not, I would accept a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second?
Thank you, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to some old business. And Mark, I'd like to have you just talk a little bit about the upcoming levy.
Yeah, so just a reminder that on the ballot in November will be our substitute levy. That is a levy to renew the existing operating levy that was originally passed back in two thousand and two. It has been renewed successfully every five years since then, and it is up for renewal again in two thousand and twenty-two. So it generates approximately one point nine million dollars for the district. The nice part about this levy is if it gets renewed or passed, it does secure a state share of ten percent, which is a savings to our taxpayers. So we have to go to the ballot and place it on the ballot as a substitute levy because of the length and time in which that money would be collected from our taxpayers currently. The way the system is set up is that operating levy has to be renewed every five years. So many people are familiar with the term renewal levy at this point. It is now going to be called substitute levy, because it is the same amount of money. It is not a new tax. No new funds are generated. But the only difference is that it would be collected, or the funds would be collected for a continuing period of time versus just the five years. So we continue to see that we use those funds to provide services to our students. We have outstanding programming that allows them to have success and a wealth of experiences. So we want to, we're hopeful that if it passes, we can continue those programs and the staffing needed to allow those to continue to flourish and succeed.
Yep, absolutely. Some of which we just heard from Dawson.
Yep.
So that's great. All right, and a little bit of update on the COVID situation?
Yeah, so just, these are, I'll just put this up on the screen here. This is, I send out a weekly, or it's actually turned into every few days, it feels like now, just email on where we're at as a district in regards to our COVID data. So this is the same information that's sent to parents, like I said, on an every other day or at least weekly basis. You can see the trends that have transpired since July of two thousand and twenty, when we start, when we first saw our first case of COVID just over a year ago in July of two thousand and twenty. You can see that we hit our highest point last school year during November of two thousand and twenty. At that point, we had twelve cases. As we came into the school year this year, you can see, as you look at the August, September start here, that our case count is now up to forty-six cases in the first fifteen or so days of school. So we are closely monitoring that spread with our health department, and we continue to make sure that we look at the trends that are happening. Unfortunately, with this round of COVID, we are for the first time seeing the spread from student to student in the classroom. With that, we asked a lot of questions of our medical experts to guide us. So we've talked to pediatricians, doctors, obviously the health department. We continue to sit in webinars and seminars. As soon as tomorrow, even again, with the governor of the Ohio Department of Health, just to analyze these trends that are happening in schools so we can do what we needed to to help combat them. The end goal is to have our students remain in school, and the way it's set up right now with the contact tracing and the quarantine processes with the health department set by the state of Ohio is that if someone, if a student is in close contact with someone with COVID and they are not masked or not vaccinated, that they do have to quarantine. However, if they are masked or are vaccinated and they're that safe three foot distance apart, they can remain in school. So we've been very fortunate in the last week to ten days that we've had a masking policy in place to drastically limit the amount of students that need to quarantine, keeping them in school. We were actually able to keep some programs from having to shut down and allow them to stay open and continue to participate, whether that was athletically, musically, or in the activities that they participated outside of school. So we just continue to monitor this day by day, and our trends show that obviously cases have gone up since we've been back in school. Our case count since Friday, August twenty-seventh is when we started to see our first few cases trickle in for the school year. You can see that they have slowly but surely gone on a downward trend since September first, which is right in this region here. So that is about the same timeframe that we made some very difficult decisions to help keep our kids in school through the masking. We are continuing to monitor what spread might occur with COVID. So we are reevaluating the masking process October first. That was in regards, that was set with the help of our health officials to say, okay, if we're seeing this cycle come through now and things are heavy now, as we noted here, at what point will we see the peak? We don't know, but we know it takes ten days to cycle through many cases. So we're hopeful to get through a few short cycles and then be able to reevaluate where we stand as a district. So as always, I'll continue to communicate with all of you, our health officials, to help make those informed decisions. We are fortunate here, the community, to have many medical people helping guide us through that process at this time. And as we meet with them, they do try to forecast with us where they see the COVID trends happening within the county, because the spread within... because the spread within the county directly correlates to how many cases we do see here in the school system. If it's high spread in the community, typically we have more cases coming in into the school system. So that green, it's very hard to see on the screen, but the green is their forecast for the next four weeks. As you can see, it goes out through October twenty-first. So you can see it's still on an upward trend. We are really hopeful to see that start to take a downward trend in the near future. So that's where we're at with our our COVID updates and information.
Well, we certainly appreciate your leadership in this time and making some tough decisions, but getting everybody through. I mean, you look at some of the schools around us that have canceled football games and other programs that, you know, are not able to continue on. I think we're we're on the right track, so.
I would just add thank you, Mark, to giving that consistent and clear communication to our stakeholders as far as our families. I have heard from more than one community member who really appreciates the fact that you are communicating those things directly to them. As you said, sometimes three times a week or or whatever it takes to make sure we're making sure that everybody is informed. Thank you. Appreciate that. It's greatly appreciated and noted.
I agree with that, Deb. I've heard the same thing. The communication's been great.
Yep, very good.
Okay, so we're on to some new business. And we have an opportunity here to really celebrate a great day at at Bryan City Schools, I feel. And I think that we're doing some great things for our community, working with our community partners to help all of those within the Bryan area in in a very positive way. So, Mark, if you'd like to make a few comments, we have received an official offer for the Portland Street property from the Community Hospitals and Wellness Center, and we're very excited about that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just piggyback off that, Scott. I would say, once we get to a motion here later today, I think today is a, it's a win for Bryan. When we look at the properties that we own as the Bryan City School District, we all establish that we have the goal to help those properties benefit the community in some way, shape, or form, not only now, but for many years to come. So we could not be more excited to announce that we have received an official offer for these properties, and specifically the property at one fifty South Portland Street. And that offer has come from the Community Hospitals and Wellness Center. And we do have a visitor and guest with us here tonight, and we'll turn it over his way to Chad Tinkle's way, the CEO of the hospital, in just a few minutes here. But I just will note that with the official offer that's come our way, it has come in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. And we know that we, or I will be bringing here in a few short moments, a recommendation to the board to make a motion to accept that offer for five hundred thousand dollars for that property. We learned, just a little history here, we learned with the hospital, they have a very specific mission. And that mission is to help people, help the community, and help everyone have prosperous opportunities moving in the future. And when we talk about those goals and missions, we have discovered, and we knew this, but we align exactly with their mission statements, exactly with their visions.
Right.
So through this process of discussing the best path and the best opportunity for this property to help the community grow, we could not be more pleased and excited to have a better alignment with our mission and vision to see the success of the community for many, many years to come. Because we know that should the offer be accepted through a motion, that they will have great plans to help the community grow through their missions and visions. So just couldn't be more excited to work with them collaboratively on this and see what is to come in the future. And we know that many people have helped lay the groundwork to even make this happen. I mean, years ago, decisions were made to help Bryan City Schools move to one campus that we're on today. That move has not only benefited our students and the community, but it has now allowed some of these properties within the community to be in these situations that they now have future opportunities to help others. So we couldn't be more excited.
Yep.
So so with that, I guess if there's any other comments from the board on this topic, I'd welcome them at this point.
Yep. Do we want to have comments from Chad or?
Yeah, and if there's not, yeah, and we can kind of follow it up, I guess, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we, if we make a motion?
Sure.
I'll recommend to the board to make a motion to accept the five hundred thousand dollar offer for the one fifty South Portland Street property. And then, once the motion is concluded, we can hear a few words from CEO Chad Tinkle and the rest of the board.
Do you guys have any comments that you'd like to say?
On the Treasurer's side, remind me, this goes into the, what fund does this go to, Kevin?
Yes, proceeds of the sale of this property will be returned to the Permanent Improvement Fund, which is the fund from which the property was purchased back when it was purchased all those many years ago.
That is a requirement of the law. What was that date it was purchased on?
I do not have that handy, Mr. Stockman.
All right, I'm just kidding.
But yes, the the funds are required to recharge the fund from which they came, in this case, the Permanent Improvement Fund.
Okay. That's good. I'm glad that the deal got done, and we look forward to seeing it grow to a new new opportunity in town more than what it is today. So it's good to move forward.
Yep.
I would just recognize that as we communicated with the board at the Community Hospitals, that we were recognizing their commitment to community and their ongoing commitment for us to have improved possibly care and through expansions or their mission, where we get care right here in our hometown. And I think for a town our size, that that we we recognize that loss and and look forward to that. As Dustin and Kevin mentioned, these are monies that go into our permanent improvement and will allow for us to expand possibly on some missions and services on our end as well. So I would just thank you again for the communication from board to board. Thank you.
That was just a great opportunity for, you know, the whole community and community hospitals. I'm just really glad we're doing this.
Yep, good. Yep, and I feel good too. It's a great, it's a great community partnership.
And the civilians taken care of.
And the civilians almost taken care of.
I would just say that, yes, the hospital's been mindful of their location next to our park facilities and absolutely is is recognizing that partnership, which is also a community partnership that we all have together. So thank you for that.
And as Mark said, our missions align so well, and and they're good good stewards of the community. It's not, it's not really any concern. So with that, Mark?
Yeah, I would just like to make a recommendation to the board to make a motion to accept the offer of five hundred thousand dollars from the Community Hospitals and Wellness Center for the one fifty South Portland Street property. So I'll kick it your way, Deb.
All right, so I will accept a motion to approve the offer from the Community Hospitals and Wellness Center for the property located at one fifty South Portland Street. So moved. Thanks, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Dustin.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now I think we'd like to have an opportunity for CEO, Mr. Chad Tinkle, and one of the board members, Bob Goulding, if they'd like to say a few comments about the arrangement that we have and and things moving forward.
Thank you very much. Very appreciative. First, let me thank Mr. Scott Benedict. I remember when we met in my office for the first time. Our open-mindedness, I think, allowed then to a subcommittee to form, Deb, I'll I'll dig on that as well, Mark Rary, Bob Goulding, Chris Cantle from the hospital, and myself. I think that subcommittee allowed us to have some open conversations that led us to this point today. It's my belief that those conversations helped foster a long-term commitment and collaboration by both parties that, Deb, that you were referring to before. I think this long-term collaboration will help our community in many ways besides just a piece of property. So I'm so grateful that those conversations started, that committee happened, because it's more to me than this piece of property. It's going to be this long-term collaboration that we have together. The hospital has exciting plans with this property to bring in new service lines to the community. We'll hope to announce those in the coming year. I just want to end by saying thank you for allowing us to enhance the health, the safety, and the well-being of our community. It is a wonderful collaboration that we have together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Goulding.
I would really like to thank you guys for your cooperation on this because I, honestly, it may be one of the more complicated deals that's happened in this community in years. And frankly, it was all a very pleasant interaction. I feel that, much like Chad already pointed out, that although we got to where we needed to be on this particular thing, just even in the background, like when we were leaving meetings or whatever, we thought of other ways we could work together. You know, figured out other paths, other little, little things. And not even all of them were all hospital things. Some of them were even, I would say, interactions between Mark and I about things that have nothing to do with the hospital that I probably wouldn't have been in that position otherwise. So I think it's a great opportunity for everybody. I think it's one of those things that maybe for five years, we just sat in this place where this didn't happen, and now we finally got there, and it's opened the door to a whole bunch of other great things. That honestly, all of our interactions, as Chad pointed out, you guys were ethical, and you were nice, and you were focused on the community. And then I think once we got past the initial reluctance about this from the past, we realized we have way more in common and way more of a common mission. And like even personality-wise, most of us get along just fine. We'd be happy to work on anything with you guys. So, or at least I would be personally. I want to thank you for your votes in favor of it. I think it's good for everybody.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate those comments. Anything else, Mark, on that? All right, well, thank you, everyone. That's a, that's a great thing. We're going to be moving forward now with the Superintendent's Recommendations, and back to you, Mark.
Do you want to take a quick recess to do a little picture with Bob and Chad while they're here?
Absolutely. That way they don't have to hang around.
Yeah, we can stand up straight for a minute.
Sure. Yep, take a little five-minute break. All right, so we'll move on to Superintendent's Recommendations. Everyone back, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, back in.
All right, so yeah, so the recommendations here. So the first one here is something that we had in place last year. It's called the Ohio Department of Education Blended Learning Declaration Form. This has now become an annual form that we as a district need to complete. It just basically allows, should the pandemic ever create the need to go into a remote learning situation, that the school has the flexibility to do that. So with that, I am just looking to pass that resolution so we ever, should we ever need that, which I'm hopeful that we never do, we made it all of last year successfully without ever needing to utilize that. And the plan is for the exact same this year, to never have to utilize that. But it is recommended that districts always have that passed just for the need for flexibility, should you be presented with a situation that is unique. So that's basically all that is.
So we.
What is this for?
Yep. It.
Question?
It, yeah, ask him, Brad.
What is this for again?
Yep, so this is called the Ohio Department of Education Blended Learning Declaration Form.
Yeah.
And what it does is it grants districts, if it's passed, the flexibility that should it ever be needed that a school district can make the choices that they see fit during a pandemic on how to educate kids. So we passed this July of two thousand and twenty as well, and it is now becoming an annual action. We were, we thought it would be maybe a permanent action, but this is now annual. So for years to come, probably every July, August, September-ish timeframe, beginning of the school year, you look to pass this so that you have the flexibility, should you ever need it. There are zero plans. They have to use this. We pushed through all of last year with in-person learning. We have every intention to stay with in-person learning all of this year as well and into the future because we have learned that that is what's best for kids. But it's recommended to have this on file in case you ever hit a very rare, rare instance in which you need it.
Got you. I understand now. I was thinking.
Yep, so blended learning would be like where some of it's online, some of it's in person, or all of it's online.
Right.
Yep.
Let's hope we never have to use this.
Right, they use the word blended.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
But we do need a motion to pass it, so I would accept a motion to pass the Superintendent's Recommendation on that Administrative Ohio Department of Education Blended Learning Declaration Form.
So moved.
Thanks, Deb. Second. Thank you, Mike.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now moving on to the personnel recommendations from our Superintendent.
Yeah, so we are still in the midst of some hiring and transfers as we start the school year. So right now, we have the new hire of classified staff. So we're welcoming Jennifer Coleman, who will be an aide with us for five hours per day. John Shell will be, he's a teacher, but he's also driving bus for us, so he has three and a half hours of a day of driving for us. We have Dayton Keller, who is a new bus driver with us, joining us at three and a half hours per day. Sherry Oak Trees is a new bus driver, and she's driving routes for three and a half hours per day. And we also have the new hire of a third shift custodian, that is Sean Gambler, that is eight hours per day. And many of those come to us with zero years of experience. We're glad to have them all on board.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have some transfers of our classified staff. So we still have some situations which aides are bouncing from position to position to cover duties within the district. So Barbara O has transferred to a special education aide, and that is for eight hours per day. And Jennifer Coleman has transferred, even though you just saw her hired, she had also recently transferred in her first few weeks with us into a non-special education position for five hours a day. In letter C, we have the approval of bus hours for the for this school year. So Linda Horning has clarified that she now has three and a half driving hours per day. At letter D, we have the approval of our certified and classified substitutes for this school year. So adding to the list, we have Mark Koonsman, Eliza, Ellen Castro, I apologize if I mispronounce some of these names, Jerry Beverson, J.B. Burns, Nicole Damore, James Harris, Sean Gambler, Jordan Brown, Adri Moheca, and Dayton Keller. At letter E, we have some adjusted hours for some of our classified staff. Kathy Frank has adjusted to seven hour, seven and a half hours per day. Cody King has adjusted to six and a quarter hours per day, Tuesday through Friday. And Victoria Santos has adjusted to eight hours per day. So very similar positions, just change in hours worked. We have letter F, a column correction on the pay scale. We recently hired Jacqueline Haake. She came to us from Eden Schools. We have her, we have to note that she is in the master's category with ten years of experience. So just a clarification on her salary schedule placement. Speaking of salary schedule placement, that brings us to letter G. We had a few staff members who have attained their master's plus twenty. That's Mindy Kepler and Tricia Good. And we also have Nicole Hurst, who has now achieved her master's degree. So congratulations to all of them. With letter H, we have some resignations. We have Jordan Robb, who was a third shift custodian. He has resigned from that position. We have Lydia Showalter, who was an aide. She has resigned from that position. Caitlin Bernaf was a kindergarten teacher. She was unique in that she was on a parente leave, and she has made a decision now to permanently stay at home with her family. So we wish her the best with that decision. And we also have the resignation of Adri Moheca. She was also an aide. And last but not least, in letter I, we have the non-renew of a certified substitute. This is simply a, basically a resignation of a substitute in essence. So we have Mary Beth Snyder, who will be pursuing other endeavors at this point. So we wish her the best of luck as well. So I believe those are all of my personnel recommendations.
All right. Well, thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark on those personnel recommendations? Anything? All right, so I would accept a motion to approve those personnel recommendations. So moved. Thanks, Mike.
Second.
Go ahead, Deb.
Thanks, Deb.
Scott.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to points of information. Mark, you want to go over the board meeting dates that we've got coming up and some of the Business Advisory Council meetings?
Yeah, so our next regularly scheduled board meeting is October eleventh. That's right back here at seven o'clock PM, and that's again October eleventh. And then, just to note, our November board meeting date has been shifted to November November fifteenth. That is a change from the second week, second Monday of the month to the third Monday, and that is to accommodate our travel to the Ohio School Board Association Conference.
Correct.
And then, like you noted, we have our Business Advisory Council meetings coming up. We have our first one coming up this Wednesday. Mike Stockman and Ben Camerillo join me and Kevin in those meetings. We have about a handful of community members that will be with us in business advisory, or business representatives, I should say. And we will review not only the happenings at Bryan City Schools, but how those can interconnect with the community and the world of business to help make our opportunities for our students even better. So those are the four dates listed there, September fifteenth, November seventeenth, February sixteenth, and May eighteenth.
One thing that for the Columbus trip, I think that was a backup to the one meeting.
Right.
And I'm not going to be able to attend that because of the situation that I got to deal with during the day.
Okay.
So I need to sit down.
Yeah, it's just a delegate kind of thing. We need to have a backup. And we can review that and work on that next month's meeting and change the delegate, I would think, if we.
Well, and Dustin was the alternate to begin with.
Correct.
So I just want to make you guys aware.
Do we, but we probably need. Do we, but we probably need to have a.
Yeah, we, we can, I can contact OSBA and.
And find out what the.
And see if they would like us to name another alternate.
I think we'll be all right. Because I, I figured that I will, I will go to that, so.
Okay, that's all.
All right, well, thank you, Mark. Any other questions, comments? Need for executive session?
I am aware of the need for executive session for the purpose of compensation of employee, as well as seller property and competitive bidding, as well as matters required be confidential, kept confidential by federal law.
All right, so could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dustin.
Second.
Thank you, Deb.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.